The, um, clock on the wall says nothing at all, but we shall start the meeting at four o'clock. Uh, Mr. Manager, I believe we have someone new among us.
We do. I'd like to introduce Brandon Madden. Brandon, stand up. Our new deputy city manager. Welcome.
Hello, this is Brandon Madden.
Yeah. Great to have you here with us tonight. Day one on the job? So, glad to have him.
Thank you. Glad to have you aboard. I see Councilman, uh, here he comes. Gibson is down there. All right.
That applause wasn't for you.
Turn it over to you. Yeah, that applause was for you. Yeah, yeah. That's right. You've never had applause like that. I don't think so. Exactly right, yeah. All right, go ahead and take it away here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We do have a busy agenda tonight, so we'll get right to it. We'll start with an update on the development code.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. And so we'll get straight into it. We have several planning items before you this evening, and the first is an overview of your development code preview document. So, before you this evening is an update on the Greenville Development Code and introduction of our code preview document. As we begin tonight, I want to state that this document is not a draft development code. Everything included is for discussion purposes only and our examples and illustrations to highlight important key components of the code. Next slide, Megan. So, we will quickly review the guidance provided to us through Greenville 2040, identify key concepts that will emerge in the new development code, provide examples and illustrations of how the ideas and tools will work in different contexts, and in the presentation this evening with our project timelines and other required actions. Next slide. So Greenville 2040 in action. Our new growth and development code putting our Greenville 2040 policy into action. Next slide. In early 2021, the city of Greenville adopted a new comprehensive plan called Greenville 2040. The new plan will guide important public decisions for at least the next decade or until at such time this plan is updated. Greenville 2040 recommends and its vision requires important actions. Among them is a recommendation for a new development code that will shape private sector real estate development in a way that helps Greenville meet ambitious goals for growth, development, economic vibrancy, transportation and mobility, affordable housing, open space protection, and overall quality of life. Staff began this work last summer with your support that led to the adoption of sixteen text amendments intended to address immediate issues. Greenville 2040 prioritizes producing affordable housing opportunities, preserving open space, improving modes of transportation and mobility while continuing to grow and while preserving residential neighborhoods and fostering economic development across the city. All this means that Greenville must make a shift from a suburban form with a suburban code to a city to be shaped by an urban development code. Next slide. So twentieth century development took advantage of open land and prioritized convenience for motorists. With a few notable exceptions, most of Greenville's developed area was built out after the Second World War when mass automobile ownership transformed transportation systems and real estate development. Local roads, especially those built by our federal and state partners, are wide-lane roadways with limited pedestrian infrastructure. These corridors were designed to move cars. The buildings are set back from the roads with sizable areas of parking between the two. And I think if you go down any of our state corridors, you can see that is very evident in the way of our built environment. So how does Greenville grow after Greenville 2040? The nodes and corridors will have to fundamentally change with less surface parking and more structured parking, greater building mass and scale to accommodate new square footage and density and greater heights. Parts of Greenville planned as nodes may begin to resemble parts of downtown. Redevelopment is intended to be gradual, so it will not take place overnight, but parts of the city will change substantially throughout the decades. Existing residential neighborhoods, most of them dominated by single-family homes, will remain largely unchanged. Next slide. The node corridor neighborhood framework is not just for an aesthetic preference. It establishes a system that supports the clearly stated priorities of the comprehensive plan. Land supply is constrained by preserving vacant land and carefully steering growth to designated nodes and corridors. Higher densities and mixed uses in nodes and along the corridors create concentrations of jobs, services, and other amenities throughout the city. Dependence on cars is reduced, other transportation modes become safer, and improved transit becomes financially realistic. And that's what we're trying for with this new code. Next slide. So, why do we need a new code? First, the current development code does not clearly push new development into a few areas. Instead, it facilitates suburban development in many places, and we are experiencing those challenges all the time through the pressures that come before this body on a routine basis. Second, it too easily allows the redevelopment in existing single-unit detached neighborhoods, which changes character and allows residential demand to be siphoned out of areas where higher residential densities should occur. Third, it lacks the right tools to either respond to creative ideas from the private sector or guide the private sector to what Greenville 2040 intends. For example, there's only one zoning district in the city of Greenville that can truly accommodate an urban project, and that is the C4 District in our CBD. Fourth, the insufficiency of the code means continually editing or working around the regulations to suit each individual development premise. Rezonings and plan development approaches are employed as Band-Aids for our system that lacks the right tools and the rules. But rezoning to a different or another district doesn't address the root cause. The same is true of constant code modifications, which create a patchwork code lacking principled structures and which also create a costly lack of predictability for developers. I think the biggest issue right now that we constantly find ourselves against is that we are being reactive. We are hopeful and we intend that this new tool will allow us to be proactive in our planning for Greenville. Next slide, please. The idea that we want to stress today is to share concepts that will help any Greenville resident or stakeholder understand how the new code is supposed to work. In their totality, these concepts will illustrate the path forward for a highly livable city. Next slide. Existing physical character will be preserved in residential neighborhoods where existing patterns are conducive to the expansion of residential properties, for example, to accommodate an ADU which we've heard the community wants and desires. Changes will take place under rules that limit the impact of those on adjacent properties in the neighborhood. Corridors will be allowed to develop at greater heights and scale to accommodate the demand for new development. Multi-story mixed-use properties and multi-unit residential properties will be the norm. Next slide, please. Nodes, and we can also term them mixed-use hubs, Mayor. I know you love the word node. Mixed-use hubs will be allowed to develop at greater heights and scale than corridors. Transitions between residential neighborhoods and more intense commercial and mixed-use areas will be managed intentionally. We've not been managing our transitions intentionally. Buffer and transition zones will be defined in detail and required where commercial uses of residential housing. Next slide, please. Infill. And here's something you've all been asking about. It's possible within existing residential neighborhoods, but it will have to match the existing neighborhood physical character. CCB and Code Studio have been working with staff on this entirely, trying to ensure the infill is being addressed, but in a way that it can be easily comprehended. The last attempt at a mass inform analysis earlier this year was seen as cumbersome and complicated. And, missing metal housing. Where appropriate, somewhat taller and mid-scale housing types like duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, and small apartment buildings will be allowed near the edges of existing neighborhoods both to increase housing diversity and to create more gradual transition areas between residential areas and commercial or mixed-use areas. What we are hearing the community say is that the density is important, but not as important as the form it takes and that it respects the surrounding as-built context. Next slide. Affordable housing is more likely to be distributed across the community through development incentives and bonuses, and affordable housing opportunities will be encouraged everywhere in the city. Next slide, please. One of the items discussed most during the text amendments, and I think probably was the most discussed text amendment, was how we manage stormwater and protecting neighbors from stormwater runoff. Net increases of runoff from new projects will have to be managed on the property that is creating the runoff. Preservation of mature trees and natural landscapes will be prioritized on large development sites. Next slide, please. Districts with the right fundamental rules on height, scale, setbacks, and design. It's no secret to any of you the challenges we have faced with our existing zoning districts. New zoning districts will be carefully calibrated, and there will be more of them so that the city gets more high-quality development of the right type and the right physical characteristics and the right locations. And this is important because we've talked many times that we do not have enough zoning classifications within the city to address the various neighborhoods that we have in our city, which leads us to having a one-size-fits-all solution and lack of neighborhood and regional identity. Transitions. We are paying more attention to transitions in this new code, ensuring the right transition between different types of areas so character does not change abruptly. And that doesn't necessarily mean just a buffer. It means the difference between land uses. It means the difference between how the built environment transitions. And it can, in other cases, absolutely mean buffer. Buffers. Transitions facilitated by the careful design and placement of new zoning districts go a long way toward avoiding the issues that we face currently. But even two properties of exactly the right type in a certain setting can still intrude upon each other without the right rules. And you all know of many instances where we faced that. I can think of one that we faced earlier this year on Pendleton Street. Stormwater. The new code will require new development to account for and manage any new runoff it may create and direct permit applications to a menu of best practices for which to choose a solution. We need to provide options to our development community. That is a way that we end up with better overall development if we allow them to be creative and responsive to a code that allows for that creativity. Affordable housing. Seemingly, the number-one issue that came out of Greenville 2040 is the need for affordable housing and ensuring opportunities appropriate for each type of each place. Zoning alone, however, cannot fix our affordable housing needs. And I think that's really important to state so that everyone hears that. Zoning alone can't fix it, but it is a tool in our toolbox. Open space. Development bonuses for developers who contribute to open space goals. How can we incentivize cluster development to allow for more green space? And when I was a young planner, we used to study, you know, cluster subdivisions, Rule by Design by Randall Arnt. And, you know, that's been in the throes of planning for many, many years. And it is a, but it is a design concept that holds true today. Next slide, please. Slide fifteen. So, single-unit detached housing is the land use that covers the single largest amount of area in the city. When we looked at everything last year during our review of Greenville 2040, the R6 and R9 still account for the majority of the land use classification within the city of Greenville. The preservation of the character of these residential areas is prioritized in Greenville 2040, even as the city overall becomes more urban. Mid-scale housing of duplexes up to small apartment buildings of ten to twelve units will be allowed on the edges, especially where they can help guide and ease the transition to a node or corridor. Mixed-use zoning districts titled MX, which we have none currently, will guide and control development, allowing for greater heights. Subvariants of the mixed-use district will provide for different maximum heights. For example, MX3 would have a maximum of three stories. Next slide, please. So how do we apply these important concepts? If we can just go through slides seventeen through nineteen, just flip through. It shows how these new code tools, districts, transitions, buffers, stormwater, affordable housing, and open space will work in neighborhoods, nodes, and along the corridors. So they're gonna, they're going to work in each place. It's just that you will apply them differently depending on whether it's a neighborhood, a node, or a corridor. The point is, there will be a different pattern of development in each area. Next slide, please. So our next steps. Next slide. No one who believes in the plan, and I think we all do believe in the plan, believes that the road ahead will be easier, fast, or simple. It envisions a complex future and requires matching complexity in thinking, organizing, planning, and executing to achieve the plan's goals. The new development code is just one step. The code does not, on its own, implement the comprehensive plan. It is one task among many. The development code only regulates development. The code does not pass our city budgets, doesn't build parks, doesn't pave streets. But, the city of Greenville will spend the next two decades tackling other projects that are necessary to make Greenville 2040 a real reality. And you're going to hear about that in one of our next presentations after this. Next slide. So to end, where are we and where are we going? Well, we have our next code connection session this Wednesday night, which will be a more extensive presentation of the code preview document that I just shared with you all. Things amp up for our staff beginning in August when we start proofing draft code. Final draft code is expected to be delivered to the community in early December. We look forward to providing you periodic updates from now until the end of the year. Thank you very much for your support of the Greenville Development Code. I would like to thank Chris Kurzak for his work as the project manager throughout this project thus far. And without our internal staff, none of this information that was presented today would be possible. They have worked extremely hard to get us to this point, and I want to say thank you to them. At this time, I'll be happy you take any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Comments?
Couple, couple comments and questions mixed in. First of all, speaking for myself, I feel pretty confident I'm speaking for everybody's had a chance to interact with the consulting team. The more time I spend with CCB Code Studio, the more impressed I am and thankful that they are in the role that they're playing for our community developing this. So just as a statement, I could talk to them for hours, and as you say, zoning is fun.
It is.
Has there, has there been, there was one of the early slides talked about diminishing, if not eliminating, but probably diminishing the need for rezoning and planned developments. I know they're really looking at our recent history and planning efforts, you know, with the fine-toothed comb. Has anybody forecasted heretofore exactly how much reduced workload would fall to the planning staff and the planning commission thereby freeing up bandwidth for, you know, as we've said many a time over the years, what if they were actually really able to not be reactive but proactive in plan versus respond?
Yes, thank you. I know that they are looking at it. I don't have a definitive answer yet because we're still working through what we would say would be projects that are entitled by right versus projects that will have to go through a certain entitlement process. So I think we'll be able to answer that question better in the next few months. At this time, I can't. But I will tell you this, we do have more requirements for how you entitle a project in our zoning code than are required under state law through our enabling legislation. So trying to balance that is what we're currently working on now.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one other quick question. I don't have the proper vernacular for this, but I want to mention this now for fear that I'll forget it. But, the whole, the whole host of things that this team is looking at as part of this code rewrite, is the, is the amount of time, the duration of time between when a development project gets started and when it's completed being looked at. And particularly what I mentioned in is, what appropriate measures might we put in this revised code that help really spur pace of development? Keep projects from dragging out, falling stale and dormant. And of particular interest, I hear a lot from constituents about detrimental side effects of projects that are taking forever. Stormwater issues, buffering issues, even if those things are corrected in the final analysis, sometimes months, twelve, fifteen, eighteen months plus can pass. Is that being looked at and what can we do?
Okay. Yes, they are looking at everything that we do and our processes and how to, you know, the idea under this code is that where we want development, we should entitle development. And where we don't, we shouldn't. And it should reduce the amount of conflict that we are seeing. And so if we want to entitle development, that means that we have to prove upon our processes in such a way that there's more predictability and there are less surprises throughout the process. And they are looking at that.
I couldn't see if Paul Dowell is here, but anyways, he and I have talked about several examples that will be alleviated or remedied, in my view, based on what you're saying, that type of work. So thank you for the questions, comments.
Um, just, oh, go ahead, Lillian. I'm sorry. No, you go. Well, let's go in.
Microphone.
With projects that aren't, haven't come, haven't arrived yet, et cetera. Do we have a smooth plan of transition to try to ease people from the urban code that we're going to adopt? And what people are planning now? Hopefully, we're not letting people get too far on something that we don't think is a good idea.
We're making sure that the people that we are meeting with are fully aware of the process that we're undertaking at the moment. And we do plan that there will have to be a transition period where things are reviewed under the existing code until a point certain in the future, at which time we basically do a switch. And so we will continue to work through that with our development partners as we get closer to adoption of the code. We're still, I mean, we're still probably, you know, nine months away, but we are having those conversations during our pre-application conferences.
My only concern was if there's some real ugly stuff. People only want to put it in District Two. I just want y'all to know.
I got a, I got a few things.
Maybe seen a few ugly things in the planning department.
So you know where we are. We are all on the same page. This is life or death for some of our communities, the neighborhoods. So, thank you so much, and I'm glad you're paying close attention. And, and I think at some point we need to say, uh-uh, we're not doing this right now.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, these aren't necessarily in order of importance, more in order of how I can read them off of my notes.
Jeez, I'm looking at her nose. I'm saying, ooh, okay.
I think, unfortunately, I know the answer to this, but I just want to ask it for clarification. Do we have purview by law to incentivize, when we incentivize affordable housing through density bonuses, that's the end of our ability to shape what it looks like? In other words, we don't have an ability to work in incentives based on AMI. In other words, if we valued a sixty percent AMI project over an eighty percent AMI project and so on, we're not able to shape that in this new code. It's more, it's either affordable, as in ADN blow, or not?
Well, I would say no, but I would caveat that because it does have to be appropriate and fit in with the context of whatever it is, wherever it is being placed, and it will be required to meet the design of wherever that is. So, if you're doing an affordable housing project in an existing single-family residential zone, then it's going to be expected under this new code that it matched the character of that existing neighborhood. Just because it's affordable doesn't mean that it doesn't get to do that. It has to be in the right location and under the right context.
Right, but...
But we can't pick and choose.
We can't, but we can't. What we can't pick and choose in is, you know, so a developer's going to look at the bottom line, right? They're gonna say a thirty percent AMI unit, maybe, depending on the, you know, the structure of it. But, you know, I can, I can lose more on a thirty percent AMI unit than an eighty percent AMI unit.
I do think you have the ability to set what you want those incentives to be for the density bonus based on the AMI. And the example that I would give you is I think that we have something similar in the existing Unity Park Neighborhood District Character Code. So, you know, obviously, how you incentivize it, you can look at an AMI, and I think you could do additional density based on the percentage. Now, that's an incentive because we cannot require it.
Right, right.
But, I mean, I think that it's definitely something that's possible and something to have conversation with the consultant about to, to confirm if we can do that.
Well, I mean, I think as our demographics are changing and we reaffirm what we value and what we're trying to retain and improve on, not to mention how AMI is, how median income is changing, we need to be looking at that. Because realistically, eighty percent of AMI meant something very different two years ago than it does now, right? Um, so I'd encourage you to look in that. On the same, while you're talking with them about that, is there any way to shape size of units? In other words, if we feel like a plethora of three-bedroom affordable housing units are there and what we really need are two bedrooms, you know, do we have any say on that? I think the size of the unit matters. The last thing I wanted to, we keep getting back to this term node, and it, I think it bothers the mayor and I more than anyone else. It's always bothered us. I'm not particularly thrilled with multi-unit hub. What was it? M U H? The Muse.
Mixed-use hub.
Mixed-use hub. Now, we can do better than that. I think the sooner we get these identities and terminology, maybe with the help of our comms department, really looked at with some community input, it might help our community visualize what we're trying to get to. I mean, the best example I can think of is in Nashville where we have The Gulch, and we have Music Row, and we have all those different identities. Those are neighborhoods, but they really are nodes. I think we can come up with something like that, and we're getting closer and closer to this that if we don't watch out, we're going to start naming them Node One, Node Two, Node Three, and it's just going to be a missed opportunity. So I think the time is nigh to establish an identity for those.
There's a, there's a coherency to this new code that we really like. That's what Councilman Brazington was talking about, too. The more we've dealt with it, it really clarifies things about how a city can develop and should develop. And, and definition of terms is a big part of it, so I think that's what we're trying to say. Just keep working on that.
Just keep working on, we could be better.
The magic word is out there somewhere to be descriptive, so people go, oh, I understand what that kind of is. We just haven't found out what it is yet.
The last thing I'll say is please in the schedule, I beg of you, please, 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 allow for training of our boards and commissions that are going to intersect with this code. We cannot just adopt it and throw them to the wolves. You know, they have to feel comfortable with it, and that just has to be built into our schedule.
We've already discussed it internally with our consultants, but yes, thank you.
Can I switch over here?
Just follow up, a couple of follow-ups, actually, from Councilman Dowell's questions. So my understanding when I met with the consultants was that we could do certain incentives based on AMI. And for instance, we could do something like, we could say that there, you could get an extra floor if you did ten units at, say, sixty or five units at thirty, and we could actually, you know, do combinations of the incentives to try to, try to, try to incentivize developers to get to that lower AMI. Is that not something that's still in play?
No, I think it absolutely is in play. I just have to confirm it and make sure that we're not, that, you know, if we start picking different AMIs, that we're not going to be on any kind of, you know, legal tightrope. But I do think it's in play. It's just a question that we need to answer.
Okay. And just second follow-up question. Are we going to, are the consultants going to actually go through and define the character of these nodes individually?
We're going to do the best we can based on what's there. But I think we'll be looking to the community to help us define that characters as well. I mean, we're going to put the zoning in place based on our small-area plans, based on the Greenville 2040 plan. But some of this, I think, there's only so much we can do with a zoning code in terms of defining a character for an entire area.
Okay. Thanks.
I think he was speaking to density bonuses, which is going to seem particularly important in the Unity Park area, so we'll see examples of it. But that's something we've wanted to do more of, and now we have some opportunities to do that. to do more of, and now we have some opportunities to do that, so.
Yes, throughout the entire...
We can learn through that process.
If you'll go back to maybe slide 15 or 16, I think we showed the ways that you can do those density bonuses. Uh, maybe a little bit sooner than that. Going back. There you go. So that's all about how we would do the density bonuses, though, how you can do it with height, you can do it on the edge. We have different designs for even within our single-family neighborhoods, of how you can do ADUs, you can do, you know, add a half a story, do it on the back, do it as a separate unit, do it to the side, and they'll have all of those depicted for us in the new code.
Hey, something else?
No, I'm good.
Just a general comment, Shannon. I've spent, as you know, I've spent a lot of time over recently looking at these and other cities. And, um, and when we pair this with GBL 2040 and what we're doing now, I think it's one of the most progressive and innovative programs that any city is doing in the country. I mean, it truly is. And so, so thank you for pushing on it.
Thank y'all. Thank you for supporting us to do this project. I'm really excited about it, and I'm really proud of the work thus far. And I see a code that, like you said, I don't know that a lot of communities see a code this advanced or this developed, but I think it's also a code that is intended to be, you know, accessible to all. And I think our code right now is just a patchwork of all kinds of things, and things are always changing, and we've got an amendment here and amendment there, and I think that really reduces the accessibility for people to the code and to really realize that there is a lot of things with development that are, that they may want to know about and does affect them, and we want to make sure that we give them the tools to know what that is.
Could you update us on the local area plans? Because that's kind of our first toe in the water, if you will.
Those will be, those will be...
Let's remember, let's refresh on where, where they are.
Yes, so there's, actually, we're doing one on Stone, Augusta, Macauster Square, Greater Sullivan, um, which one did I miss?
Malden.
Lawrence. And, oh, and, yeah, the Augusta-Malden Triangle, and those are due in August. So we'll have information on those at the August Code Connection Session, and we'll be presenting information on those between now and then to the subcommittees.
And development hadn't stopped in the meantime, just since you, as you're really through those neighborhoods, I'm thinking, well, gosh, we've got a lot going on there, a lot going on there, too.
If things continue in 2022, based on the trends of 2021, when we pulled the numbers from June 30th, we have more inspections, more burnt building permits, and more building permit applications for this year over last, which means that, now, of course, things can change with market, you know, recession, inflation, but right now, we are on track to have the busiest year ever for building in the city of Greenville. We've completed 14,000 inspections thus far this year, and in 2020, we had completed, I mean, in 2021, we completed 20,000.
Total for the year?
Yes, sir. Thus far. I mean, thus far, 14,000 for this year, thus far, 20,000 last year. I think that talks about, as you said, our continuing growth here in the city of Greenville.
Yeah.
Anything else?
You're up next also.
Okay, great.
Open space, good balance to everything else we're talking about.
Yes, so as I mentioned, I think Edward's going to come up here, and he's going to give you the, the primary bulk of this presentation, but as you all know, one of the items that were identified through Greenville 2040 for the implementation was how we were going to preserve open space. You all asked about it during the budget, and we explained that it was part of our 2023 work plan. As we are continuing our work on the development code, we've also begun our vacant land preservation study to begin implementation of that item in, that was identified in Greenville 2040. Megan, if we could go to the next slide, please. And just to recall, if you'll remember, that the Greenville 2040 Plan called for up to 35% of the existing vacant or undeveloped parcels to be preserved within the city limits, and we have about 2,700 acres of undeveloped land that was identified. And we are now looking at ways of how do we start to put those into permanent preservation of open space? Next slide, please. And so as a reminder of our top priorities of Greenville 2040 that we just spoke about was our open space and environment, affordable housing, and transportation and mobility. And I think that we have made a huge effort towards talking about open space throughout this code, but I'm not sure that we spent, I mean, about affordable housing throughout this code, I'm not sure we've spent the same time on the other two priorities. And so it's time to start jumping into those. And tonight, we're going to talk about open space. Next slide, please. And so we want to preserve vacant land for active or passive park or environmental preservation. Our team has identified numerous properties throughout the city that might be good choices for us to look at for those uses. We also want to make sure that we're reserving vacant land for affordable housing opportunities, and I think our partners with the Greenville Housing Fund are working diligently to try to do that. And then we also want to create opportunities for future multi-use transit connections. And I think that the work that James and his team have done, as well as working with the Lawrence Road TOD Study, so moving a step forward for that as we look at additional mobility options. And as y'all know, of course, we have the Swamp Rabbit Trail, which also provides additional mobility options, and as it grows and as we start to develop our density along corridors, it's just going to provide that to be an even more viable option. So here is the vacant land that was identified in our Greenville 2040 Plan. Here's the map that was shown for our vacant land, and this is what we used as a starting point for our work. So I'm now going to turn it over to Edward, let you go, let he'll go through what the urban design team has been working on to get us to this point today, and then we'll be back at the end to answer any questions you might have.
One, one question about the definition of vacant land. Is that taken directly from the Land Use Code? Is that how it's being designated, or is there another way?
Yes. Yeah, Shannon tells me yes.
Okay.
So, good afternoon, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time this evening. So, so, yeah, this, this map was given to us by the consulting team from the Greenville 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And really, we had a, somewhat of a monumental task was placed before us, and that is, they said, listen, here is the, you know, here are 27,000 acres, 2,700 acres of vacant land that exist. Now, we've got to determine of that 35% that we have been sort of challenged to acquire over the next 20 years, how do we make the valuation of what land we ought to pursue? All right. It's a very good question. There's a lot of it. 2,700 acres, that amounts up to about 945 acres that we've been asked to look at. That's over 300 parcels that you see on this map here. Next, please. Megan, thank you. So it, it's a difficult proposition to do, but here's what we did. We started out simply with this GIS layer, which identifies all the parcels. The next thing we did was we built a matrix of the scoring criteria that we thought we ought to use. Now, when we look at open space primarily for preservation, it's very easy to identify what is the appropriate scoring criteria, right? Primarily, that's going to be if it has natural features already on it, for instance, if it has wetlands, if it has stands of trees. But then it occurred to us that we can actually use this vacant land in order to address those other two priorities that the comprehensive plan set out for us. And those other two priorities, as you know, are affordable housing, areas for affordable housing, and also areas for multimodal transit and transportation. So when we looked at those scoring criteria, we had a whole host of them, and we'll look at them on the next page. But what we also did is we began to assign weighted values to each one of those criteria, so that essentially what we were doing is we were looking at these vacant lands through three different lenses, all right? And those lenses told us which lands would become elevated best for open space versus which ones might be elevated best for affordable housing, or which ones might be best for transit. And some of them, a few of them, actually sort of rose to the top. Turns out, they're great for all three items. So if you'd move to the next slide, please, Megan. So here are the criteria that we looked at. We looked at, as you might suspect, what is their environmental sensitivity to each parcel? We went through each one of these 300 parcels, and we were looking for things like wetlands, and we were looking for stands of trees. We also looked at acreage. Acreage was another key criteria that we looked at. As you can imagine, some, some land uses would, would, would be much better if they're much larger, you know, if you're looking for preservation of stands of trees. Sometimes you might want a much smaller acreage if you're looking, for instance, a neighborhood park in a small neighborhood. Proximity to public open space was a key criteria we looked at. Obviously, parks next to other parks may be redundant. However, natural features next to other natural features overall have a greater impact on the natural environment. We looked at proximity to trails and to transit. Obviously, we looked at surrounding land use. I think this was a really interesting one, because when you think about it, affordable housing may work better adjacent to areas that have, that have shopping or that have available jobs, employment opportunities. We looked at whether or not these parcels were in special emphasis neighborhoods. And of course, we looked at whether or not these parcels were in one of the identified nodes or corridors, right? So if we're trying to make sure that the nodes and corridors, corridors are primarily for higher density, that might lend itself towards affordable housing, but not so much towards environmental preservation. We looked at the future development plans, of course. You know, is a parcel on the future Swamp Rabbit Trail, for instance? And finally, we looked at constructability. How easily could one construct an affordable housing unit here just based on grades, topography, issues like that? Next slide, please. So we assigned each parcel these, these various scores, and then we gave it a weighted value based on what lens we were looking at it through. And some parcels, of course, scored very high in one particular area, and others scored pretty high across all three lenses. And so we use this matrix to sort of look at all these parcels and figure out, guide us towards which ones may be best used or best might, we might want to acquire to help us obtain our goals in the 2040 comp plan. Next, please. Once we had done this matrix, and once we had identified these parcels, we reached out to the other departments in the city, environmental engineering, parks and open spaces and their transit, trails and mobility's coordinator, and community and economic development. We got a lot of great ideas for how to tweak the scoring matrix that we were using. Next one, please. And so once these priority parcels are identified, there are many avenues, we feel, to actually begin acquiring these parcels. Megan? So obviously, there can be the direct purchase of these properties that we've identified using the various available funding sources that we currently have. There also can be internal collaboration with some of our other departments. For instance, we are aware that there is a flood buyout program with the city's engineering team. And of course, we can also look at partnership with local organizations. Potentially, Natureland Trust, for instance, comes to mind, or other organizations that that deal in this. And then, of course, if you look at a parcel that we do not acquire, cannot acquire, and ends up becoming developed regardless, we can reach out to the developer and talk about creation for incentives of securing some of that open space anyway. As Shannon indicated earlier, this may be, for instance, a higher density, more stories for more open space, or we can begin looking or asking developers to dedicate some of that open space within these private developments back to the city. Oftentimes, this happens with areas that are not suitable for construction within a parcel, and can come back potentially to the city. So we have identified several parcels already as being sort of key opportunities. Next. And so I think we're ready to move on to the next steps of confirming those parcels and beginning to look at how we purchase them.
We wanted to present this to you this evening and get your feedback on the work we've done so far. We do have later in the presentation, but I know with the essence of time of the matrix of how the team did the work to get to this point, we do have multiple parcels identified that we would like to speak with you about, but we think that would be a good item for your August agenda for executive session, once you've had a time, once you've had a chance to review this, and let us know of any changes that you would like before we bring those parcels forward to you at your August work session.
Yeah, I just have one thing that jumped out, and I don't, I might be mishearing what you're saying. I get a little concerned when we talk about incentives for a private development for providing open space unless that's available to the public. In other words, you know, if it's Center Core Park in the middle of that development that's creating green for our environment, but nothing for people who don't live there. So I would, I would take note of that. The other thing is, is when we offer an incentive for open space, and it is open for the public, we cannot have a gray area of who is responsible for maintaining it and who is responsible for paying for that maintenance. And if that is falling on the city in the negotiation, then the people who are involved in doing that, police, fire, Public Works, Parks and Rec should come in. We cannot ignore that, that impact on them anymore. So somehow, all that has to be taken into account. I'll just leave that there.
Next question for you.
Yes, sir.
29 square miles is the size of City Greenville, thereabouts?
28, 26.
What's the total acreage of the city? Anybody know?
It's more than that.
I can get it for you.
We could use about 7,000. Used to be...
I usually have my square miles, the acreage...
5280 times 5280 times 29 by 40.
What I mentioned is 950 acres.
18,500.
So, so effectively, we're pursuing 950 acres, which is 35% of 2,700 out of the big pie. Just was curious to, I hadn't seen that metric before. So if you, it sounds like Megan's quick on the draw, but if somebody knows it now or later, that'd be interesting to see.
That, that is correct. What we, what we were tasked with doing is identifying just the vacant land, not the city as a whole, and that is correct. 35% of the vacant land.
Five or six percent, if my history major mental math is right, 18, what'd you say? Five percent?
Yeah. We've reclaimed a lot of land along the Reedy River in the last couple of years. It simply was not in the, wasn't out there as part of the city in the past. Some of it was outside the city, in fact, but the river corridor, you mentioned that Swamp Rabbit Trail, but the whole river corridor, great green opportunity for the, for the city going forward. How does annexation play in all this, too? What are your thoughts on that? Since that's another good topic.
We are happy to annex anything we can for open space.
For open space, that's what I wanted you to say, right? Yeah.
Well, that's a good point.
It's a plus.
Have you done the scoring exercise around the perimeter of the city to see which...
No, we've only focused within the city, but we could, we could do the scoring exercise within our one and a half mile boundary of our annexation covenant.
Yeah.
Well, and that, that, the 2,700 is out of GBL 2040, which predated a fair amount of annexation in the Conestie area. Did it not? I mean, have we added substantially since then?
Not that much.
Not that much?
Yes.
So with the tool that we've developed, there's no reason that we couldn't apply it to any parcel that we're looking at.
Sure.
And similarly, see what is the best potential land use moving forward, and that would include annexation. And to address your earlier point, Councilor Dowell, yes, I think evaluating the feasibility of, you know, and the, creating development plan or vision for any parcel that we would recommend acquiring, I think would be number one step. And that would address maintenance, you know, obviously, who's going to take care of it, you know, before we decide to acquire it, can we even...
I mean, it looks like it's very data-driven, which I very much appreciate, because it's, I mean, how else do you even approach? We got to pick up 945 acres, but I think we, we have to be nimble. We've had some cases where development was occurring, you know, we knew this development is happening, we said, wouldn't it be great if we had X parcel to preserve and make it better than what it is right now, and in the blink of an eye, it's gone? So, you know, I just, those things are going to happen, but...
I think having a, knowing some areas that we want to focus on is helpful, and we'll be looking to you all to help us prioritize that, because we do have conversations with developers every day, and it's just a matter of starting those conversations, and there, sometimes there is the right opportunity at the right time, and you just got to be able to be able to essentially go for it at that moment. And so, but having some prioritization of that through y'all's support would be helpful for us as we start to have those conversations.
I, I just think certainly in the major projects, when we say, ooh, if only we had this parcel, that's a signal to start looking at, ooh, is it for sale or could it be for sale? You know, we've missed some opportunities, but I think having this in place gives us that ability to quickly react and, and look at those developments as they come in in the discussion phase and be out in front of it.
That, too. Every time we're having conversations with the development community, if we know that those parcels have been identified, then it's in our mindset, you know, and it just was like, oh, wait, we, we may have something that we want to talk to you about for this. Edward?
Yeah, you know, this is really a sort of a general tool tool for separating out the wheat from the chaff, right? It should be, by no means should it be entirely prescriptive and say, well, these are the exact parcels that I identified. Now, let's go after that. Obviously, we know that every project is a story. But this is a, this is a great way to begin to separate out what we need to focus on. Others may arise, some that have revealed themselves through this project may turn out not to work simply because of, you know, other other projects that are in play. But it's a good way, I think, to help us identify and begin those conversations with ourselves, with the development community, and with you.
We're dealing with a very small amount of money. We're at 500 plus 500 now, so a million in the bank on it, based on two budget years. That doesn't get you much in Greenville. But I think with strategy and with these public-private partnerships fostered, you know, we can at least have an impact on it.
Think the public-private partnerships are something that we've been successful at in Greenville, as well as I think we have our partners in some of our conservation areas throughout the community that would also like to help with this once we have a more identified roadmap.
A couple of comments. First of all, the enclaves, a lot of enclaves are vacant, especially especially at the southeast, where all the enclaves are. And but my question is, does the 300 parcels that we're talking about, does that, is that parcels that are vacant now? Is there any consideration for bringing in distressed properties that currently have structure on them to to make them vacant?
At the moment, no. This this really focuses on anything that is undeveloped.
Okay. And then the other question was really related to Dorothy's is the budget. And we don't have, we've given money to the Housing Fund to buy property, but that doesn't go very far. So at what point will we start talking numbers of how much it's going to cost, how much we need to allocate for y'all?
I think once we have a roadmap, then that then that will help guide our budget discussions next year as we start to go into budgeting.
Thank you. We really didn't know what in the world number to use.
It's just been a guess. But once we have a better tool, and this is say, this is what we're looking for, then we'll have a better idea to help with the budgeting process next spring.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know Mr. McDonough, we're running.
Okay, 505.
Okay, so Michael's going to bring it home for us. Quick. Yes, this is just an update on our sustainability plan. Just to remind you all that when Michael took over as our principal planner for long range planning in the Planning Department, we transferred the role of sustainability out of the City Manager's Office and moved it into the Planning Department. We shared that with GRAC, and they were supportive. That's our Green Ribbon Advisory Committee that guides our sustainability efforts here in the city. And our sustainability plan was presented to them on June 28, and they passed by unanimous vote. So Michael's going to give you a quick update on where we are with our sustainability efforts.
Thank you, Shannon, and good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I think we can go to the next slide. So just briefly, Greenville has a longstanding commitment to sustainability. It is reflected in the GBL 2040 Comp Plan and is part of the City Council Priorities and has been for the last several years. As we got into this project and working on the Sustainable GBL project, I personally learned a lot more about really how integral sustainability is throughout the city's just overall operations and programming, and really is kind of a core value and principle for a lot of our departments and what we do. And then I had the the pleasure of being designated, the privilege of being designated Sustainability Coordinator a couple of years ago, while in the City Manager's Office, and continuing to work on that in the Planning Office. So Megan, next slide, please. Couple of recent highlights. Just touch on these briefly. Obviously, Unity Park and all the work that's been done there. Many other areas of stream banks, stabilization along the Reedy River. City added 14 electric vehicle chargers to its city garages last year. So the total for that is now 35, and those are free to the public while they're in the garages. I participated, representing the city, in the Electric Vehicle Stakeholder Task Force that was facilitated by the South Carolina Energy Office last year. Their final report, I think, is coming out any day now. Very excited about that. We work with Greenville Water to reduce water consumption at city parks and fountains, and to identify leaks and try to get ahead of those before there's too much loss. And then finally, this was exciting. The Planning and Codes Divisions helped with with getting the city a Soul Smart designation this past year. And so we're starting off at the bronze level, but expect silver, potentially even gold, could be within reach here fairly fairly short time. Next slide. Some challenges and opportunities. Basically, the point of this slide is that more and more the public in the community is looking for their local governments to step up and do more on the sustainability front. There's been some setbacks at the federal level, which had kind of been leading a lot of the the national climate change efforts. Those have happened recently. And so I think folks are looking more and more locally to for climate action and for sustainability projects. There's also a trend in corporate sustainability, and as that trickles down into the public and workforce, a lot of those those employees are looking also for their local governments to take more proactive steps in the climate change, sustainability realm. Next slide. So this past year, we worked with the Shai Institute for Sustainable Communities at Furman University on a project that we titled Sustainable GBL. And this was basically an assessment and an initial sustainability program for the city of Greenville. We had an open house last September, and then worked with the city departments and the Green Ribbon Advisory Committee to refine the goals and recommendation out of there. And as Shannon mentioned, that was passed a couple of weeks ago at the GRAC meeting. So we were very, very pleased to receive that endorsement. Megan, next slide. Focus areas within Sustainable GBL are the built environment, climate and energy, air and water, transportation and mobility, goods and services, and community engagement. And if you just, the the plan itself is not very long. We wanted to keep it short and short and concise and kind of high level, and make it really accessible for the general community. So if you do get a moment, I encourage everybody to go and review the plan and see what's in these focus areas. Next slide. Couple of the key recommendations coming out of this. Want to increase the city's public education and outreach on various sustainability topics. Add potentially, you know, a more dedicated position to focus on some of these. There's a vacant planner position right now that we're retooling a little bit to have more of an energy focus and sustainability background. So we're excited about that. We want to establish an interdepartmental working group to coordinate across all the different operational departments and and planning and some of the other departments to coordinate on these projects moving forward. There's opportunities always for more solar panels and renewable energy installations on city buildings. GRAC actually did a good bit of analysis there. And so in addition to the David Helen Solar Project, there's some other potential feasible sites here that are city-owned properties. And then, next slide. So in terms of some next steps, we do want to establish that interdepartmental working group to coordinate on these moving forward. Mentioned that planning position that is currently open, and so we're working on updating the job description for that. Building out the city's sustainability website with a bunch of information and educational materials. Would like to develop more of a year-round calendar for sustainability programming to to do more around some of those key dates throughout the year, Earth Day, Earth Week, Arbor Day. We already do some stuff, but there's always more that we can do just year round to to really emphasize sustainability. There's a lot of great programs that are already doing work in the sustainability realm here in the Greenville area. And so we want to be able to partner with some of those organizations where it makes sense. Obviously, there's grants that are available, some big opportunities coming down with some of the the federal dollars coming down the pike. And then I did mention potentially hiring a consultant to help the city with the Climate Action Plan. There's a, there's a good amount of support for this in the community, among the GRAC members, and with some of the other advocacy groups here in in the city. So I think that's about it. So Shannon, if you want to help answer any questions, I just want to take a moment to thank Shannon, thank Beth and the communications team. They helped with actually putting the document together. Thank you to all the other city staff that came to the open house and that met with the Shai Institute folks to really go through all the recommendations and get us to the final plan. So happy to answer any questions.
Eight or 10 years ago, Michael, you know what my question's going to be. I know you do. Eight or 10 years ago, GRAC was created with sole purpose of creating a climate action plan. And, you know, I'm glad to see it in there, but I'd encourage us to step it up a bit, even if it means we're not hiring a consultant to do it. And I get moving a little quicker on that plan. Please.
Running?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have executive sessions up next. Lee?
Yes, sir. Thank you. You have two items to discuss this afternoon, both regarding contractual negotiations for the disposition of city property, one off of Augusta and one within the Central Business District. These are permitted for discussion in executive session under SE Code 30-4-782.
Number.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. This will be downstairs in ninth floor. Okay, all right. Be right back.